Madam Chair, are you ready? Steve, you ready?
I'll make a motion if we come out of executive session.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second it.
Are those in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This certification of closed session pursuant to subsection 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, each member of the Board of Supervisors upon roll call certifies that to best of their knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the Board Supervisors. Any member of the Board Supervisors who believes there was a departure from the requirements shall state so prior to the vote indicating substance of that departure in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe a departure has taken place? Seeing none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Glenn Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Steve Reading?
Yes.
Horace Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Di?
Yes.
Madam, you have approval to turn to regular session.
Thank you, sir. Our agenda is the approval of our minutes for our September meeting. Yes, sir, you may.
Before we get into that, I'd like to make a motion that Russell County Board of Supervisors committed $30,000 to the Cumberland Industrial Facility Authority for the purpose... The purpose of hiring an executive director for said facility. Yeah, this will be for a one-year contract to be reevaluated at the end of that year. And this would be contingent upon the other sister counties committing the same amount of money, which would be Buchanan and Dickinson in Tazewell Counties.
I'll second it.
All right, Steve, David, any discussion? Any thoughts? All right. Steve?
Madam Chair, if I may, for discussion purposes only, just so the public is aware and all of us are in agreement here on what we've been discussing, that it is a one-year contract and it will be publicly advertised, this position. And anything else that we want to make public with this so far?
It will be advertised for, what, a minimum of two weeks? And there will be an RFQ, a job description, job qualifications, all published and voted on by the CIFA members. Is that correct? Anybody else want to add anything to that? No, that sounds fine. All right, all those in favor of this motion? Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, Steve. All right, now we'll move on and we'll go to approving our minutes. This is for our regular September the 7th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
David?
Second.
Second. Lou, any discussion? All those in favor? Now, we have a motion to approve our workshop on the 21st. A motion to approve those minutes. David?
Second.
Second. Carl, any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Next, we have the approval of our expenditures for payments.
So moved, Madam Chair.
David, do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, any discussion? All those in favor? Next, we have our county attorney reports and requests. Ms. Katie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the only thing that I have for the board tonight, the potential amendments to the bylaws regarding committee appointments, I have provided to the board some proposed language based on discussions that the board has had about the amendments. I did have a couple of questions. And I guess, I guess just in general, I mean, regarding these bylaws, there's not really a whole lot of actual legal issues. It's more preference on how this board would like to make appointments. I mean, I can give advice or opinions on what certain language, the effects of that might be, but most of this is, most of what's been discussed has and presented is permissible. I will say that I did reach out to Tazewell County and Buchanan County to see what kind of provisions they had. And their county attorneys did inform me that they did not have specific provisions in their bylaws regarding how committees are appointed. They more or less had a way of doing things and that kind of stayed with the district of each supervisor. And then obviously, there would be more discussion on boards where the boards, the number of the individuals on there exceeded the number of supervisors. So I have provided that language, but I will be happy to draft anything that this board directs me to do. It's more what you all's preference is at this point.
Any discussion?
You know, I think, I think some of these committees and stuff, it's not a problem if they have, you know, more than seven or less than seven. I think we just go about the way we've always done it.
Okay, I will echo that because I know we've had several that have resigned or moved and our committee numbers are dwindling. And I think it has always been a gentleman's agreement. Now, it's going to be a ladies' and gentlemen's agreement that if someone drops off, if we need not to replace them, that we are doing that and we are working hard to reduce these numbers. And I think that we just need to go on, make these appointments so that we can move on with our county business.
Well, in order to do that, you're going to have, we all voted on a motion. Did we or did we not, Katie? There's a motion and it's been duly approved. And I've tried to get that point across to you all. You're either, if you want to go back to the old way, you're going to have to rescind that motion some way. Am I right, Katie?
Yes, you could, I guess you could either rescind the motion or you could just make a motion to amend the bylaws. If you were on, I think everybody voted yes, so that is, if that's what the board wants to do, if you're on the prevailing side, you can make a motion to reconsider that motion. If that motion was defeated, then the bylaws that you had in place prior to that would be in effect. Or you could just make a motion to amend the bylaws back to the original version. I think if that's what the majority of the board wants, that you could achieve that purpose either way.
So if, if we want it just to go back the way we had it, we make a motion and vote on that?
You can do that or you can make, Steve made the motion, but everybody voted yes to that motion to amend the bylaws to the language that he presented. A motion could be made to reconsider that. And if that motion does not pass, then the bylaws in existence before that would remain. I mean, there's, there's two, it's what the board wants to do. I mean, there's other language that's been proposed by myself and other board members. And so if that language, if that's what the majority of the board wants, then a motion would need to be made for that language to be adopted by the board. So it's, again, this is what you all's preference is. But right now, the bylaws have been amended to that language initially proposed by Steve.
And we're saying we need to go back to, if we want to go back to the old way?
We need a motion for that.
Let me ask this. I'm not clear of really why that we came about making these changes, Steve.
To try, to try to get equal representation from all the entire county. And so one supervisor, on committees that had as many as seven, that each supervisor could appoint one from their district so that we could have equal representation.
Yeah, I'm for that, for each one of us to have.
Yeah, and that's the way it is now. But, you know, now everybody wants to go back and we're just, you know.
So, but we can go ahead, even if we've got seven members now, but somebody has two and nobody has one. If we go back to the previous way, then that person that didn't have representation can simply add someone to that list, correct, Katie?
The laws you had in place before, and I can pull them up, were very, they did not specify on how people would be appointed. It was, it was just, it was very, it was very broad. So, I mean, it basically is whatever the agreement is between you all.
Basically had a gentleman's agreement between all the board members then, okay.
Madam Chair, that's basically what I was going to ask and you reiterated that just now. So that does explain it, that we can just do a consensus amongst us all that we're going to continue to do right by our fellow board members. Yes, thank you.
We need a motion to say that, to go back to that?
Yeah, I think probably, you can do it, you can do it either way. You can do a motion to reconsider the motion that Steve made to amend the bylaws. And if that, if that motion does not pass, then the bylaws would be what they were prior to that being accepted. Or you can make a motion to amend the bylaws, again, to revert back to how they were before, I think it was July the 12th is when that motion passed.
All right, so as Chair, do I need to relinquish the chair to Tim so that I can make that motion? Okay, Tim, I will relinquish the chair to you. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion, if this pleases the board, that we simply go back to how we were and we honor our gentleman, lady and gentleman's agreement to one another, that everyone has at least one representative on each of these committees. Is that what folks want? That's my motion.
So your motion would be that the bylaws revert back to...
To the original.
Before the July 12th amendment?
Yes. Do we have Tim? I know, but I'm saying you need to ask. I made the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Discussion.
I'll vote no on that.
Yeah, I'll vote no also.
I'm a yes. I'm a yes, I made the motion.
Yes.
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 Okay, five yeses and two no's, so the motion passes. And I will relinquish the chair back to you.
All right, thank you. All right, our first one is the Russell County Planning Commission. And we did have Mr. Sword who has resigned. He does not want back on there. And there's three names up. So if anyone wants to make a motion for putting someone in their district that does not have a representative name?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Reading, you want, you start.
Well, I was going to say, Sinestine Keith is in my district. I would like to nominate Ernie McFadden to serve on the Planning Commission.
All right, any other nominations?
Madam, well, here we go. This is the confusing part. How many openings do we have currently? Do you want to take it district by district with a consist, a consensus amongst all of us?
All right, with that, we are going to vote on Steve's district. So all those in favor, any other nominations from your district, Steve? You're good. All right, all those for Mr. McFadden in Steve's district. Next, who does not have, Mr. Edmonds. Carl, that was yours.
Okay, I'd like to put Jack Compton on there.
You're going to nominate Mr. Compton?
Yes.
All right. All right, any discussion, any thoughts? All right, all those in favor of Mr. Compton?
And we have one more position, right?
Yes.
Okay, and District Two has no Planning Commission representative. And back in June, when we started our excellent adventure on this, I had reached out in my district and we did have an application. And that, it's not in this packet, but it was in the packet previously a time or two. So it's, I'd like to appoint Charles Collins or make a motion for Charles Collins.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of Mr. Collins for Lou's district? Every board member has a representative on the Planning Commission now, correct? We've honored everyone's wishes. All right, let's move on to the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission. So, I, myself, I would like to do this as a slate with these folks because they have served. It is a one-year term and they have done a good job with this. They are business leaders in our community. They own small businesses and they've worked hard to work on the outside board, as they call it, with the Cumberland Plateau Economic Development Commission. So do we want to make one individual or do we like, want to do a slate with this?
I'll make a motion, we...
Yes. All right, Frank Horton, Tony Lambert, Ron Blankenship, and Jim Eaton Jr. So, Tim?
I'll make the motion, we reappoint those as a slate.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Horace, any further discussion?
I need to abstain on Jim, he's my cousin. I don't want to get into a conflict of interest there, so all the rest I'm fine with.
Okay, thank you, David. All right, all those in favor of this slate of candidates? And David's going to abstain. The next is our Dank Community Center. And we said this was not going to be affected, so Lou, this is your committee. A little community, I should say.
I'm just going to make a motion that we reappoint the two that's on here for the Dank Community Center. And we have had a loss in our community. Mr. Arthur Phillips had served for many, many years. And I, I just want to say that he was a real guy to help take care of things. And so we will be looking for another community center person, I guess, shortly. So, but thank you all for supporting these two.
So all those in favor? Anyone opposed or abstaining? All right, next is our Russell County Library Board. Karen, Ann, and Judy Ashbrook.
I would like to make a motion for Kim Thife on that board.
All right, Kim Thife. Okay, and I do not have a member representing the library board at this time. And I know in our packet, we had Mr. Bob Breaman, who is an attorney. And he, I would like to place his name on a motion for the Russell County Library Board. So let's start with Kim. All those in favor of Kim? All right, all those in favor of Mr. Breaman, Bob Breaman? Anyone opposed, all right? Next, we have our Russell County Highway Safety Committee.
We didn't appoint the rest of the library.
I'm sorry, you're right, I left, you kept... All right, okay, yeah, yeah, so Horace? All right, at large. All right, all those in favor of Ms. Monk? And how about Ms. Ashbrook, who's... All right, all right, next, we will move on to the Highway and Safety Committee.
We need to reappoint Judy, don't we?
Yeah, if y'all so choose. If that pleases you, that's fine with us. Yeah, that's fine. Do you want to go ahead and reappoint her? Judy?
I've already got one on there. I thought we were going to try to adhere to one.
Okay, sorry. The next is our Russell County Highway Safety Committee. Gary Dodson, Johnny Jesse, Steve Di, Eugene Ferguson, Tony Maxfield, Mike O'Quinn, Barbara Cox, Henry Stinson, Carl Ray, and Mr. Emory Altizer is deceased. And I do know that Mr. Di, Sheriff Di, has asked that we remove his name and put Bill Watson on in his place. So, and I think this is pretty well evened out. We have someone from VDOT, we have state police, we have county deputy, and then we have our board representatives. So I'm going to allow Mr. Emory Altizer's slot to drop off because I would have Mr. Ferguson, who also works with VDOT, and he lives in my district. So do we want to do these as a slate or do we want to do these individually?
I can make a motion that we'll do them as a slate with the exception of Steve Di being replaced by Bill Watson and of course, Mr. Altizer unfortunately being removed from the list.
Yeah, so, any other discussion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of adopting this slate? Anyone opposed or need to abstain?
I'll abstain because my name's on there.
Yeah, well, we put you on there, Carl. We're going to keep you on there, we'll keep you there. All right, the next one is the Cumberland, excuse me, the Community Policy Management Team. And that's Ms. Farmer, and she works with the school. And that is part of the bylaws that she does have to serve on that. She is the special ed director for the school system and it is required that she serve on that. So do we have a motion to return her to the CPNT?
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right, all those in favor? Anyone abstain or no? All right, Lou, do you have another one with your community center?
I included Ms. Pratt in that other one when I said two, those two members.
Okay.
So thank you for asking.
All right, so she is back on. All right, next, we have the Southwest Community College Advisory Board. Mr. Keane's term had run out and we had Joe Harding. And I've spoken with Dr. Wright about this. She is a retired educator. And Dr. Brown represents the school system.
I'd like to nominate Catherine Easton.
Okay, Catherine Easton, all right. All right, all, should we take these one at a time, I guess? All those in favor of Joe Harding? Anyone opposed? All right, all those in favor of Greg Brown? Anyone opposed? All right, those in favor of Catherine Easton? Because there is no limit of number, is there, with the bylaws?
I think there is. This is a college board, Southwest Community College Advisory Board.
Katie, do you know? I think it's always been two. Put her on there, so... All right, so Katie? Yeah, so Katie, should we go in reverse order? Okay, so you're, Ms. Easton?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of Ms. Easton?
Hi, I might affect you, I'll make, raise your hand.
Raise your hand, please. All right, one, two, three, four. All right, all those in favor of Greg Brown? Was he the second one we made notion? Okay, all those in favor of Dr. Brown? No, it's just been customary because he was with the school.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't press the microphone. So we're voting for two only. Okay, so that means Catherine Easton, Joellen Harding, and Gregory Brown are the three. But two is going to fill a seat. So we only get two votes here, all right. I mean, you're filling two positions, so, so you have to vote for two.
All right, next is Greg Brown. One, two, three, four. And for Joellen Harding. Three, four.
We have, we have people that are multiple voting.
Brown, you can vote twice. One, two, one, two, three, four. Those for Joellen Harding. One, two, three, four. So that's three for Joellen, correct? Okay. Next is the Russell County IDA. And we have, we do have a letter of resignation from Scott Gilmer. Gilmer, and it was in our packet, and the town then did, they voted for Ms. Deanna Jackson. So, um, do we need to accept Scott's resignation first? He has his, he presented a letter last month. But that's theirs. They automatically appoint their appointment.
I don't know that you need to accept it, it's just more for notification, so you can fill the vacancy.
Okay. So, and then the next we have is Roger Soward.
Roger's in my district.
Okay.
I'm going to nominate Nate Kaiser.
All right. Anyone else?
What if you haven't got anybody?
If you don't have anybody in your district, you can. That's our gentleman's agreement. Yep. That's right.
Well, what if I had wanted to reappoint Roger, and I couldn't do that?
Yeah, you could. Right. Okay. Yeah. Drop off this on, that you've already got?
Well, they, they will come off when their term comes out. When their, when their term ends, then I, I've already got somebody on there, so I can't put anybody else on there. But our gentleman's agreement.
Okay. Well, we'll continue, and then we'll vote in reverse order. All right, Katie, should I? Carl has no one, David has no one, and I have no one. Forgot members on your board.
Yeah, but when their term comes up.
Bylaws simply that you reverted back to said that they shall be made only by member motion adopted by a majority of the full board. So, anybody can make a motion, but again, just, I guess, what you all discussed, you talked about a gentleman or lady's agreement, so I mean, whatever, I mean, you just need, you all need to have that worked out. There's no formal rules that bind you here, but I mean, you know, how you're going to do this in practice matters, so I would kind of figure that out. That's the only advice I have. I said it's only a member motion. That's all, the only rules there are.
So, before, before we would nominate who we was choosing, and then we voted, so it takes four votes to carry. So, Steve has his nomination out there, right? And if anybody else wants to have a nomination for that position, they're welcome to it. Is that not correct? That's the way we were doing it?
So, I was going to go on and let Carl nominate somebody, David nominate somebody, and I'll nominate somebody.
Well, I'm really the only one, if you look at all the ones that's been served on there, my district's the only one hasn't for years has not had representation.
So. Okay, do you want?
I'll withdraw my nomination.
I'd like to nominate Burke Archer. He, he's a great guy. He ran the.
Burke Archer.
Burke Archer. He ran the juvenile detention center and has a great relationship with the state, has a lot of connections. He's retired now, and he's a good, he's a good guy, he's a good Christian man, and I'd like to, I'd like to put him on there.
Okay. All right, Carl?
Okay, I don't have anybody in my district either, and I was going, do I need to wait?
Make your motion.
Okay. Motion for Roger Soward.
All right. And I don't have anyone serving me, so I'm going to nominate, to nominate Harry Ferguson. So. Katie? We just.
Majority.
Majority? Okay. So, all those for Harry Ferguson? So, it's just me? Show of hands. Three, four. All those for Roger Soward? For Burke Archer? Two. So, we filled three positions, and we only voted once. Is that correct?
So, when's the next time we're going to have an IDA drop off?
Yes, it's by statute.
Yes.
Seven, seven people that the board appointed, and then two to serve from the town of, town of Lebanon.
So, although those folks, I feel, I feel like I've cheated Carl and David, because they have no one on the board.
Yeah, who's next? Do we have a list of when the terms end on these somewhere?
Okay, it'll come up. All right, our next is the Oak Grove Community Center. This is another community center, and Tim, this is your district.
I haven't had a chance to talk to all these people. Could I put that one off? I'd like to put that one off for them.
Do you want to table it?
I would like to, yes.
So, Katie, do we need to vote, since this is already on the agenda, just to table this one group? Motion, Tim?
I'll make that motion.
All right. David? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll just table it to you. Talk to them all. Okay? All right, our next thing on the agenda is our citizens' comment period, and I have BJ Keen. If you'll step forward, give us your name and address and your concern, please, sir.
For the county, but it never got passed or rolled up, because it was about the shooting in it, how would they handle it? But we've got a great county here, and I'm proud of our county, but we're getting some awful, awful people in the county lately. I have an incident in my community that's happened twice. We had one lady that would pull in at two and three in the morning, she'd be so drunk, she'd leave the stereo going, broom. We like to never got that calm down. I got a guy right now, I spent an hour and a half with the Russell County Sheriff's Department last Monday, talking to him. We've called, and I hate to keep using the sheriff's department and tax money, just to have them drive by, and they can't do nothing. We got a guy that's, he's, I can't accuse him of being on drugs, but he plays in the grass and digs up rock and howls from daylight to all night, opens up the doors on his truck and plays it all night long, as loud as he could. My wife has cancer. We had to take her breast off last week, and I try to keep it quiet, but, you know, we do things to protect our pets, you know? We have a town ordinance for noise. Why can't we have a simple little county ordinance? And, you know, I'm, the hunting of fish, hunting noise, you know, nobody's hunting after eleven, twelve o'clock, you know? We need an ordinance or something to protect the citizens up there, and that's what I'd like to ask the board to do, to come up with some kind of county ordinance to protect their citizens. Show as much protection for them as we've showed for our animals. You know, we passed things to protect our dogs and animals and chickens even, you know? So, we've got a lot of new people coming into the county, and believe me, some of them don't respect the county nor the people, so. That's my agenda, to get a county ordinance passed for noise, and I'd appreciate it if you guys would take it in consideration, whatever it takes. I can get more signatures if you want, I don't want to have to and bring it up again and type y'all's town. I'm not, I don't think I'm asking for, you know, something major, just a simple ordinance that says, hey, you know, if you, please, if you got a DB noise on your muffler at a certain point, they'll write you a ticket. Why can't we do the same thing? If a deputy can come by and hear the noise from his car, it's too loud. You know? If you're up to three, four, or five o'clock in the morning, and you got to go to work, and you can't sleep, then you're endangering the community. I got a neighbor, he drives the bus. He gets up at four o'clock every morning, leaves at four thirty. Sometimes his music's going all night. You know, he don't, he's got to come back in, he's got to sleep that day, because he's got to get back up at four and go back out. He can't get any rest. We've had a lot of conflicts. His daughter-in-law asked the guy to turn it down, and let's just say it got real belligerent. So, before this thing blows out of proportion and somebody gets hurt, I think the county ought to step in and do something. I think they ought to say, hey, we're wasting too much of the sheriff's time and tax money running out there, and we can't do a thing about it. So, I would appreciate it if you would take this in consideration, and just come up with simple little noise ones to help the sheriffs out. They're, they're willing to come, it's just they can't do that. And somebody's going to call from there every time, you know? We talked to the state police headquarters, they agreed. They said, oh, well, you got to know he's doing something. You got to know he's out there tweeting or doing on drugs, then they call. He'll do it, and you, you don't see him doing it, you know? I'm not a, I'm not a drug enforcement officer. I just, it's not my job, and I don't want to lose my cool with him. I don't want to be over here in the Russell County jail, but, and I'm sure Regina doesn't want, but, oh, he, he called her everything that he could think of last week, you know? And all she was doing was asking him to turn it down so J.C. could sleep, you know? So, that is what I'm after, that's what I'd like to have, and it's not just me, there's, there's a lot of residents in Russell County. If this was back twenty years ago, we had the same outstanding country people we had then, be no problem. You could knock on your neighbor's door then and go, hey, Dave, turn your music down, I'm trying to sleep. Dave, it's your BJ, I'm sorry. You turn it down. Go over and ask them now to turn it down, see what happens, you know? And when you get some of these young guys now, and they're out there playing in the grass at three or four in the morning, digging holes in the yard and music going as loud as it go, it makes me mad. I'm sorry. I think we need to protect the citizens of Russell County a little bit better than what we've done. Okay? I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you. Your concerns, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any other concerns? All right, our constitutional officers. See none. County administrator reports and requests.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, it is. Jim Frank subdivision. I know, Jim Frank subdivision, I know. Division, sorry, yeah. Yep. That one has trouble too. Yeah, yes.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. First up on the county administrator reports is the 2021 Virginia Community Development Block Grant, the CD, CDGB Regional Wastewater Fund, for $2.5 million. Of course, it gives pleasure for the, the Department of Housing and Community Development to inform Russell County that they have been offered a community development block grant in the amount of $2.5 million in support of the Dainte Regional Sewer Line Extension Project. This proposal was offered funding under the 2021 CDGB Regional Wastewater Fund. This is an FYI, this is the, the funding to, for the, all the Dainte customers, and pick up the extensions all the way into St. Paul. Right now, our wastewater treatment plan in the Dainte area, it only picks up the customers up down to the sewer treatment plant. This will pick up additional customers from there into St. Paul, which we have an agreement with on the St. Paul side. So, they had been approached a couple of years ago that we were trying to get the loan, but this is 100% grant funded, $2.5 million. Second, on the county administrator request is, reports is, the, of course, the Virginia Department of Transportation. Y'all have had an opportunity to take a look at it. There we go. Sorry about that. All the, on Route 615, we got a slide on Black Valley. Mr. Ray has, has, has issued that, and I'm glad to see that they finally have put that on the plan of action to take care of this on, on, on the slide. This is a long time coming. I know the pandemic, and I know that VDOT's not here, but I will speak up for them, you know, between the contracts and contractors, trying to get materials during the pandemic is almost a nightmare. It's been hard to keep up. I also want to inform the board that the Hansonville project at the red lights on Route 19 is scheduled to be paved starting tomorrow, tomorrow. So, anybody that's went through has seen the electronic signs, so be careful as you come through on, on the traveling public in Hansonville tomorrow. So, we're going to try to get that done.
Mr. Lester?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't mean to interrupt your VDOT report, but the Welcome Center, it says on the VDOT report, it's calling it a St. Paul Welcome Center, and that indeed is not. It's the Three Rivers Destination. So, can we get clarification to VDOT for that, please?
Yes, I will absolutely do it. The, it is the Three Rivers Destination Center. This is also another grant that the county is working on, and working with the Heart of Apit Latcha, the Tobacco Commission, and the Department of Housing and Community Development. It was also showcased during the last weeks when there was thirteen governors in the area for Russell County. So, this is a project that they're working on for regional tourism. It will showcase not just Russell County, but all of southwest Virginia. It will extend all the way from Poplar Gap into Buchanan County, into the Breaks, into the Clinch River. It will also. it will also showcase each and every county around here. Uh, again, this is a, uh, this is a project that they're working on, it's about a $2.6 million grant also. And I would get VDOT to change that. And, and we're also, we have submitted a, uh, a grant in adjacent to it for a pedestrian bridge that VDOT is currently working on, to give them credit for a pedestrian bridge that will link into the Destination Center into the State Park. Uh, this will give a, uh, take the foot traffic, the bicycle traffic off of the Route 58, which is dangerous for the traveling, walking public, this will give them an opportunity to access through to the State Park and their adjacent parks and the river without interfering with the primary route. Do you have anything you want to add? Ms. Wallace?
Uh, yes, it will also connect the Heart of Appalachia Bike Trail that runs down through Tazewell County, it's Route 640, it'll come through, uh, and be, and, and you can also use this as, I would call a jeep trail down to the Destination Center, and then you could walk across the bridge for a connector, but you can also drive on 58 there. But this will connect our communities, which is, uh, all the way from Tazewell, Virginia, down through, um, um, the Pinnacle area, and it'll take in, uh, Mr. Eaton's area, it'll take in, uh, Carl's area, and a part of Rebecca's area, I guess, and Tim, it's just gonna miss you a little bit, but I'm sorry. But it is on the, it is on the VDOT, um, website as the Heart of Appalachia Bike Trail, so I encourage all of our river communities and communities that are offshooting from this to be thinking about this, because we're gonna, the marketing is gonna be there. Thank you.
Welcome, ma'am.
We're gonna have to reroute the Clinch River a little bit.
I'm sorry.
And, and just, and, and one good thing about this Destination Center, it will be promoting all the assets in, not just Russell County, like I said, it's thirteen counties, this takes up the footprint of the Harbin Appalachia all the way into Pocahontas Trails, all the way through here, all the way to the bike trails, all the way to Big A, and any other asset that we have in southwest Virginia. So, um, it's a great little project, it is a great needed project. So, next on county administrator reports, of course, VDOT wanted me to do some marketing for them, as anybody knows, litter, that's the next, noise and litter, Lord. Of course, this is the Lovers Not Litter Month that VDOT is promoting, and, uh, of course, you know, just give everybody, you know, a heads up that, you know, this is a promotion by VDOT during the month of October, you know, for try, for not litter, but also want to emphasize that any community or, or a group of citizens that, that wants to do litter pickup, VDOT has a litter pickup program, and you can also adopt a highway, and actually, if you have, within a community, if you want to adopt a highway, they would be glad to work with you in taking these routes up. We know since the pandemic, and that's just not in Russell County, but all adjacent counties in southwest Virginia, we've had a, you know, horrific time of keeping the litter down. And I know that we are getting complaints through this, but this will give an opportunity for all the citizens to come together, to work on a community project, and it, it would, and I'm pretty sure that we get a lot of participation, especially in the, back in the counties. Next on the county administrator reports is our, um, is our truck sale. Of course, we purchased, are talking about trash, this is a trash truck, so, of course, if, uh, anyone that doesn't know from Russell, uh, our disposal program, our trucks right now are utilized over a two-year period, we buy them on state contract, and then after two years, we get a guaranteed minimum price sale of it, it's a contract that we have in place for the, uh, these, for, through the government sales. So we purchased a truck at $161,000, now with the pandemic and binded on state contract, we sold it for $176,000. So, this is, this is the way to operate our efficiently. So, uh, we use the bargaining power, purchasing power of the state Virginia contracts, we can buy it at a cheaper rate, and we can utilize them almost over a two-year period for little or no cost, and of course, we made money on this one. Next on the county administrator request is another, this is another VDOT, this is a resolution supporting the closure of Route 679, Thomas Warner Ri- Road, for the drainage cover replacement on VDOT Project 679 on 83. The, uh, VDOT, Virginia Department of Transportation, Virginia Department of Transportation has deemed it necessary to close the Route 679, Thomas Warner Road in Russell County for the replacement of certain drainage cupboards and related to the construction of a project. Uh, I need a motion to close this section.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the min- county administrator request is, um, this is in connection with the, uh, Russell County Courthouse, the Virginia Resource Authority Resolution to Proceed for Reimbursement in Connection with the Courthouse Capital Improvement Project. Uh, this is a resolution for our finance agreement for reimbursement of any costs that has been incurred, uh, under the Courthouse Project for reimbursement to the Russell County Board of Supervisors. I need a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Steve, all right, any discussion? All those in favor? Any nays or opposing, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, again, another grant, we're, uh, we're, this is a letter of support that the Board of Supervisors gave to the Cumberland Plateau Planning District for a letter of support for the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, VITA 2022. This is, uh, a letter of support in conveying support for the applications submitted by Cumberland Plateau Planning District for Buchanan, Dickinson, Russell, Tazewell Counties in partnership with Point Broadband. This will, uh, this project will serve the schools, vocational, training facilities, businesses, healthcare facilities, state agencies, and most importantly, will offer gigabyte service to over 12,624 addresses within our four county region. Uh, the projects expect to result in universal broadband within our district. I need a motion for approval.
I'll make the motion.
Of course, do we have a second?
Second.
Tim, any discussion? All those in favor? Any nays or staying?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And then, another grant, this is in relation to the Destination Center that we talked about before, this is from the Cumberland Plateau Pla- Company, the, uh, the Cumberland Plateau Planning District Executive Board met on, uh, Thursday, July the 29th, 2021, and approved the Russell County C Prop application for $100,000 for the Three Rivers Destination and Center. Uh, I need approval to accept $100,000.
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right, Lou, a second?
I'll second.
Of course, all those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining?
Next on county administrator request, of course, is the Fallen Warriors, and I would, uh, like to turn it over to one of the speakers, the Fallen Warriors, to present.
Thanks, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chairman and the rest of your Board of Supervisors for having us here. Uh, this is something that's very close to me because I have served in the military for over twenty years, and I have lost brothers and sisters. Uh, this wall, that one of the projects, the Fallen Warriors, that we've been working on a little over four years, uh, has, has grown, uh, with this wall that you see in front of you, there's over 3,200 names, with twelve counties in southwest Virginia and two counties in, uh, west Virginia. McDowell Mercer County makes up almost half of the other twelve counties in Virginia, the names, and all these gentlemen that's on there is, uh, was killed in an accident from World War I to present day. Uh, this is something that we come up with as a project to keep their memories alive, it's kind of designed like the, uh, Vietnam Memorial Wall, it can be etched and sketched, and, um, as we're coming down the road here in southwest Virginia, we would like for Russell County, uh, to have a panel on this and for y'all to help us with that. Uh, we have a design, uh, that's, uh, designed and made, they're weatherproof, uh, actually, if something was to ever happen to us, it don't belong to us, it belongs to the people of the county, that's, that's the foremost thing, it don't, we're just the caretakers. But we want it, we want it to be present when we do stuff in the counties, and here lately, Russell County, we've been kind of quite busy with Vet Fest and some of the projects that we're doing, to, uh, keep those that's passed away and served their country, their memories alive. And it's, it's amazing, uh, when you see people that comes around and starts telling stories about an individual that's on there, I grew up with this one, oh, I remember him, you know, and that's, that's part of it, keeping their story alive. Uh, the, uh, we work close with the Department of Defense, and, uh, Morgan Griffiths' representatives has helped us research this. Uh, if anything was to ever happen with recovering bodies, M.I., uh, PLWs or MIEs, the panels can come off and be re-etched and put back on. Uh, would you like, guys like to add anything that's coming on to this?
No, I think the most important thing is that, one question was asked, are the families of the Fallen Warriors responsible for any cost? No. No, no, no. Um, what, what we're, what Fallen Warriors are asking for will include everything, the panel, the maintenance, hopefully not, not, you know, not having to add names, but that will also be included, the upkeep. So, it's, that's just it, you know, we're asking for one amount, and that will do it. And it broke my heart when we had, I'm sorry, when we had Veterans Breakfast at the fair, and there was, there were quite a few veterans there, and, you know, couldn't find their friend's name because Russell County didn't have a panel, broke my heart. I know Lou Wallace was very upset about it, I talked to Steve about it, I mean, Lonzo, it's, it, we need this panel at Russell County, for Russell County, absolutely. If it's not for us, but for the, for the families of the people whose names are gonna be on there, so they can go and find the names and not be upset.
You're exactly right, and I want to make a motion, we provide this $5,000.
Second.
And, and I apologize, we should have amended this back in 2019 when you first brought it to us, I, it's, it's our fault, I'm sorry.
Yes, I agree. Um, Madam Chair, I know you have a motion and a second, so we can discuss, and I, I do want to say that, yes, we should have done this a long time ago when somebody came, and I remember that very distinctly, and it should have been taken care of, but today it is, you have a motion and a second.
All right, all those in favor?
Proudly, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Lonzo?
Yes, ma'am. Next on the county administrator request is the Spearhead Russell County Memorandum of Agreement. This is an agreement between, let me pull it up, this is a memorandum of agreement to establish the guidelines for co- cooperation and coordination between Russell County Erosion and Sediment Control Program, which will be, uh, directly managed, uh, by the Southwest Regional Recreation Authority related to activities associated with routine maintenance and operations slash use of recreational trails and related support of the facilities. In a nutshell, this is, this is an agreement between Spearhead and Russell County to ensure that we maintain erosion and, uh, sediment controls within the trails, to make sure that we're meeting within the, uh, Department of Environmental Quality, DQ's guidelines, and the other regulatory agencies. This is an MOU, there is no funding tied to this, this is an agreement that we will go ensure that the, uh, ENS controls are in place in stormwater and work with them on future projects. I need a motion for approval.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
Tim?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Uh, I have still today got 125 miles of trails mapped out in my area, which would encompass tie into Buchanan County and all the way down to St. Paul and Big A and all that area. I would like to ask our county administrator to set up a meeting with these people and find out what it's gonna take for them to be able to facilitate this opportunity. I went round and round with them, I'm opposed to giving them the money up front, it takes fifty miles to be an actual certified trail, if our board could look at doing a, a drawdown on it after the trail's complete, I'm fine with that, but I don't want to see the money go toward administrative fees and wages and all that, I want to see it go toward the trails.
Well, David, I was there and I rode and I talked to ARC members, do you have, of your 125 miles, do you have easements and right-ofways from the landowners? That's the biggest hurdle that you have to face.
We've got two easements that we're working on right now that are on the Gents' property, that are on mine permit area, so, we have looked at it two or three times to see if we can come off the mine permitted land and be able to do it. Now, they're riding up there all the time, not on the Spearhead Trail, but just, you know, on that access area, and it's, it's outlaw trail is what I guess you call it.
Yeah, that's what you call it.
But I, I would like, the, and I have talked to the Gents', they're fine, I have talked to different people that live out in the drill community, have one lady that wants to donate her home to have a destination area, a little store, or an area to be able to sell the permits there, I mean, this, if you've ever rode this trail, and I rode it, and it poured rain, and these guys got me on there and we left at seven, didn't get back till eleven at night, and I said, dear Lord, I didn't know all this was there, and even as a young boy, I rode my motorcycle up there, but I didn't know where you could go from point A to point B, but I won't, I am serious about this, and I'm tired of spinning my wheels, I mean, I'd like to see something done, I think we can get these two permits released and go ahead and start.
The director that, uh, I rode with and spoke with, she gave me the grant application, and, um, I can forward it to you to get started with the money that, and it's grant money.
Well, we should just give it to the county administrator and let's go ahead and facilitate.
But until you have those right, that's the big chunk.
I'll get them.
Yeah, so we'll work on it.
The, the, the thing that we're talking about now is just erosion and sediment control for the county to be able to do this. Now, I will say that there is a new director, executive director with Spearhead Trails, and it is a female, and so, um, I'm not saying that it's gonna be easier to negotiate with, but I'm saying that they're very open from what I've, the conversations that I've had, because we've been dragging and lagging with the piece that we're working on down in the connector from Mountain View to Daint, Virginia, that has been on the table since 2017 or 18, Mr. Lester? So that's been a long time, we've been fussed at by DMME because we haven't got our money on the ground properly, and, uh, we've just had issue after issue, so, we have, um, let's just say we've crossed the dividing line, and we are finally on our way, and we have talked to them extensively about, um, I'm with you on this, because I was like, I'm not giving you any money to maintain a trail that does not exist in my county. And, um, so, I discussed that with Spearhead, and that could be something that we do individually, go to their board meeting and talk to them, so their board hears, um, and that is all the counties, here's our sister counties again, has representation there, and I think that it would behoove us to have, uh, Melissa Slimp come and, and talk to us and begin a conversation that we can, um, get this worked out for you and your community, because it's important to you, and I support that wholly.
I appreciate you.
Yes, she is the new director, and they also have their own engineer who happens to be doing, what is that called, Mr. Lester? He's on duty with the military.
He's in, he's in the reserves, right?
Yes, thank you, I could not come up with that, so, he is gone, but he's got all the engineering stuff done, and that was an issue that we didn't have, uh, this organization did not have its Ps and Qs, it seems to have that now, and so, I think that, that, I, I will gladly pass her number along, and you- and you all can discuss it with her, and she has Mr. Lester's number. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those agreeing with the MOA Memorandum of Agreement for Spearheads? All those in favor? Anyone opposed or abstaining?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is the approved planning plaits from the Planning Commission plaits. I need approval for those. So moved.
Second.
Second, Lou, all those in favor? No one abstaining or no?
Next, the last item on the county administrator request is a travel request. This is for the Russell County Public Library for the Association of Rural and Small Library Conference on October the nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. This is also fully paid for by grant. As you all can see, that we're, we're utilizing the grants right now. So I need approval for, for the Belinda Levy to attend the Association of Rural and Small Libraries Conference during October.
So moved, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair.
And a second?
Second.
Steve, any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone abstaining or saying no?
Ma'am concludes county administrator reports and requests.
All right, thank you. All right, the next thing is to have any of our discussion or reminders. Tim?
Thanks to the Russell County Career and Technology Center, to the Horticultural, Horticulture Department for the mums. Make sure that you get one on your way out.
Yes, thank them very much.
They do an awesome job.
Lou?
Yes, Madam Chair. I do, in reading the reports given to us by our authorities and boards and committees, I do want to say that in my, reading my PSA report, it says the Castlewood area potential projects. And so I do have a need in the Chestnut Ridge area. Their spring boxes are going dry. So I just want to put that out there that we need to have water down, it's down Mu Road towards Scott County in the Chestnut Ridge section of my district. And also, I had one more thing and I've done, I've already lost that, so Carl's next.
Carl?
No, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I have one thing here. We've got a couple of old dilapidated buildings up at the Senior Citizen Center. They took over, they, they're in the building there where the new PSA offices are. And I appreciate, I think Rebecca and her husband came up that day and spoke. And they have a great facility, but there's a couple of old dilapidated structures out there that I would like to get an estimate on to see what it would take to get rid of those and maybe extend that area, maybe into a, a park type thing for the seniors to have, you know, some tables outside or some picnic tables or the luxury of a grill or some outside area where they could grill out. The, the building's very adequate for their meetings and stuff like that, but it is kind of, where they grew, it's kind of confined them to a smaller space. And with COVID and everything, if they had an outside area where they could participate, even if you, if we happen to continue on with COVID or what's coming next, it's hard to tell. But I think if we could facilitate some of these opportunities for our seniors to give them an outside space, and I know with winter coming up, it's, it's probably not possible. But in the, in the warm weather time, if they had a nice area that they could facilitate and separate, they could still have a functional opportunity. It's up at Sword Creek, right beside the, where the PSA.
David, that old, the old white one that's run right adjacent to the road, we might can, but the other one that used to be the head start, I don't know, we'd have to check Lonzo, but I think that's still restocked.
Okay.
But I'm not sure.
Yeah, I understand, ma'am.
We can check on it, that's.
Well, I'd just like to get a cost estimate of what, you know, if the PSA or whoever we have that we could partner with that could just. Yeah, we got the seniors.
They remodeled it.
They remodeled it and everything. And Cumberland's, I've just left the meeting over there.
Senior citizens paid for all that.
They're real excited, but it takes up a lot of area parking and those buildings are dilapidated and I, I might get jumped on. There might be some historic value there, I don't know. But I just want to make sure that if they're unsafe and they don't have any power to them, is that right?
That, that building that you're referring to, that, that's parallel to the road, yet horizontal to the road, it, it has mold in it. That's why we had to move them out into the new building. It, it, it is completely.
Well, Mr. Hesse and them there, you know, they got the church right there. And that would give them additional parking on Sundays, you know, and stuff like that. So it's kind of a combined opportunity for us to get rid of an old dilapidated structure and offer the opportunity for outside space for people that's, I mean, this is pretty tough on our seniors having to stay in all the time. If we can facilitate some, in all of our districts, come up with some sort of ideal to facilitate an area that they could meet outside and separate, you know, fairgrounds, other areas, you know, whatever.
It'd make a great green space.
Appreciate it. That's all I have, ma'am.
Steve?
I'll pass.
Okay, I just have one thing. Dr. Wright from the Community College has asked if he'd like to have a luncheon or a breakfast with, and rotate it with two members at a time to come to the college. So if anyone, any board member wants to attend his breakfast or his luncheon, let Lonzo know and that, because he does have several dates and go up to see what the college is doing and what, what they're trying to present to the public.
I'll send out the dates that are available.
All right, thank you. All right, the next thing, our next meeting.
Madam Chair, before you, before you get any further, I, I did remember what I wanted to say and that ties into exactly what you just said. Dr. Wright and the Southwest Virginia Community College School of Culinary was part of the ARC meeting in St. Paul last week. And I congratulate their chef, Steve Gilbert and Morgan Wallace, who came along. And it was a fantastic evening and Dr. Wright was there. And, and we made sure that Southwest Community College was mentioned and congratulated. So we, I just want to say that publicly, that that was a great thing for us and I appreciate, I appreciate that college for doing that. Also, David reminded me on the dilapidated buildings, we've got this in the back of our little brochure or our booklet tonight. And there are a ton of things. So I need to ask this board, when it comes down to the building official is asking for directions from the BOS, where are we with that? What do we do?
The current, the current status, I'll let Katie jump in here after that if she wants to. Right now, we've got about four pieces of property that have already been through the board in review. So, and I'm, I've also passed them on to Katie to make sure that we dotted all our I's and T's, especially when it comes to property, you know, croaching up on a piece of property. The, the rest, the, that Mickey's got on the list, I will get with him to make sure that if he hasn't got the approval, if he's already inspected, to get them before the board, to get approval to move on those the same way that luckily that the, the PSA building, we own it. So that will be an easy decision, not a factor on that one. But the other pieces of property. But also, while I've got the opportunity to talk to the board, I would like to talk to you about next time from a proposal, either putting in for a part-time litter officer or doing an in-house realignment with one of my positions for in-house litter officer. The Board of Supervisors, like the noise ordinance was passed, didn't get passed, but the litter order was passed in July, that was the effective date. We got the ordinance in place, it is, it's strong. But we need someone in the field to be able to, to enforce that. Because it's, it's hard not to enforce it. And we currently have the Sheriff's Department in, and with the current employment, it's hard to get deputies. Right now, we're, we're, we're streamlining two per shift throughout the county. So that, you know, it's, it's stretching our resources thin. So to be able to either, you know, get additional resources or modify or internal to get this. Now, with that being said in the proposal, and I'll, I'll put it in writing to the board, we think, and we've run the numbers between me and Brian, that I think that between the fines that we get and saving on picking up trash with other resources, we can almost pay for this position. So.
Does it have to be somebody in law enforcement to be able to be an enforcement person?
That's things that me and Katie are working on right now. If it's, and I'll get, I'll present that all to the board. It makes it easier if they're, if they're in law enforcement or retired that has a certification, they can present it in court. If not, then Katie's going to have to present it in court. So, and, and we'll get all the details ready for you that. Me and Katie's been working on that one. So, but I just want to give you an opportunity to think about it. We're moving and we're getting enormous amount of calls, especially since the pandemic. It, it's from nineteen and it's in every district. So I, you know, I see everybody nodding their head, so it's, it is a problem. So I need y'all put the, the ordinance in place. We've, and we've lagged behind on it, we got behind during the pandemic. But I think we got the process in place and this will close it up and let us move forward in all your districts. I really do.
Well, let me ask you one more question. Like, say you're talking about, what particular ordinance you talking about right now, just litter?
Yes.
So we don't have noise right now?
No, you do not.
No. No.
From churches, they were afraid they could not, you know, have the mics. Jim Little came here, I remember him distinctly. And a lot of people did not want to pass that because they feared that they cracked down church PA system, thing like that. Like this fellow came, Jim Frank Toad, subdivision, I had a lot of complaints from people about noise all maybe all night long. And the church department said they can't do anything because we didn't pass the ordinance. We need to revisit that and see if we can eliminate some of the things that were scaring people concerning, you know, maybe having a party at your own yard past a certain time. You know, things within reason and seemed like some of those things was so far that after that restricted people more than what they felt like they should be restricted. You know, freedom of speech and expression, but your rights end from I begins a certain time in life, you need to express yourself.
Anyone else have any concerns or thoughts? All right, with that, I will ascertain a motion to adjourn, but our next meeting will be November the first here at six o'clock. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
David, we have a second?